Updated invitation today? Is there a different meeting going on? It's, what's that all about?
Uh, I think Rick inadvertently sent out a second invitation to the, um, to the meeting tonight. Is that what you're talking about Clarence? There's two invitations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I did that.
Yeah, you were listed as the organizer on the second one, Rick.
Oh. No, no.
Sorry about that, folks. Phone call I had to take and got rid of that one. Shauna, are you all set?
I am all set.
Okay. Did everyone here said I call a meeting to order at six oh two or was I still muted?
You were muted.
Oh, alright, so. We're in business now with, uh, let's see, four board members, Courtney, Eric, Meredith and myself present with two principals and a superintendent. Did I get everybody? Um, anyone else don't notice anyone else joins later? We're really, George said he might be late and I haven't seen Rachel yet and Amanda.
I think George is not coming and Amanda's late.
Yeah. Uh, the email I got from George says he either wouldn't be here or he would be joining late, at least what I received, so we go from there. So approval of the agenda will start in, uh, it was my mistake where we have a personnel issue to discuss in executive session, so we'll put down a personnel. I forgot to do that when I was talking to Wendy. Anyone else have any other things? Meredith, you had something you wanted discussed, um, where does that fit in?
I guess it's huh, new business?
New business, okay. And that's, uh, uh.
Declaration of residency?
Residency. If you could resend that to me, I would appreciate it somehow. My messing around, it didn't come through. Um, and did you send that to Chris too? Okay, so everybody's got it. Anything else for the agenda? Anything that we missed? We have a motion to approve the agenda. Who'd like, who'd like to approve the agenda?
I will.
Eric, motion by Eric to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second, uh, Courtney. Um, all those in favor, thumbs up, wave their hand, something. Um, those opposed? Motion carried, so declare it, uh. Rachel, you've joined us, correct? You're muted, but you've joined, yes.
Yes, hello.
Hello, very good. Just for the record. You're here, alright, so, um, alright, that takes care of that. General public comment? No general public being present, there's no general public comment tonight. And the consent agenda approval of the minutes, um, the special carousel meeting of August fourth and the August fifth meeting and the September second meeting, all three sets of minutes were in the, were posted with the material. Is there a motion to approve? I'll move that. Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. Um,
um.
Any discussion or questions?
Yes. Uh, we, we approved the minutes for August fifth last, last month.
Oh, alright, the regular meeting ones.
Mm-hmm. We didn't do the carousel ones.
We didn't do the carousel ones, okay.
At least though I know if you can find it.
So, so August fifth ought to be deleted out of that motion. Uh, cause that's the regular meeting. Alright. I will just take that out, so we're talking about the, the September second meeting and the carousel meeting. And the motion, is there any, um, um, any errors or omissions or corrections to the minutes?
Um, yes. Um, just, I just noticed a couple for the agenda, um, uh, the legal motion that we had added, added to new business. Think that should be on there, I mean, even though it's in there, but, um, at least for, we're, um, adding to the agenda under number two.
Um, on approved minutes of September, okay. What should we be adding? Number two, approved agenda?
Um, the legal motion for council.
I'm trying to see where it says. Oh, consent agenda. Prove being. Come on. What page is that on, Eric? That you're talking about?
The first page there for the for the, the minutes for September second.
Uh, tell, uh, call to order approval of the agenda?
Yep.
Ask for additions. Or no, at least some matters and George pointed out next meeting date, uh, Chris added food service account. Motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
And it was unanimously. What's missing out of there, the?
We, we added, I think it was you who added, um, that legal motion for council that we did at the end of.
Okay, and where, was that right there?
Yeah. For approving the agenda, it was added.
Oh, 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 we added, alright, I'm following you now, we added the, to the agenda that we would be dealing with that later on.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay. The, the addition to the agenda was that we would be dealing with a legal, um, a legal issue later on, okay? That, yeah, that should be in there, okay? Would that change, uh, is, uh, anyone, um, any other, uh?
Yeah, I have another change.
Yeah.
The, it says approval of the minutes for July first, that's when we approved the, uh, August fourth minutes.
Blue minutes, oh, and it should have been August, that should be August four.
Yeah, and, and actually, I think this was just copied from the previous month's minutes because I don't have that we, any, anything was changed, so. I think the minutes were approved as they were for August, so.
Okay. Alright, so, yeah, alright, somebody just copied over the wrong date. It was the, alright, so we'll make those, the changes to those dates to get that correct. Um, anything else with the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
Alright. If not, all board members thumbs up or say aye or something. Those opposed? Motion's carried, so declare it. Um, alright. Warrants, we have warrants number one thirty and one thirty-two. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, move to approve them warrants.
Motion by Eric to approve the warrants. One thirty and one thirty-two, is there a second? Who'd like to second the motion?
I'll second, Meredith.
Meredith, second some motion. Um, any discussion or questions? Is, uh, I think it was, I think it was, had to have been that one, I yeah, one thirty, um, we ordered wood chips for the two schools. Outcome, one's eleven hundred, one's two thousand. Is that a difference in area, um? Wells is almost twice as much as Middletown for the same thing. I was just curious how that happened. Is that quantity?
Uh, I would assume quantity, but.
You've got a tractor trailer load each of you, or?
Well, I, I, I wasn't naming unloaded, I didn't see how large it was, but, uh, I assume it's by the, by the yard.
By the yard, I, I just, it, it just kind of stuck out because it was one right after another.
Yeah.
And from the same place and one's eleven hundred and sixty and the other's two thousand. Uh, I just wondered, uh, if, uh, is it because Wells' area is greater? Probably. The area.
Had, um, we had Visbit come out and do a playground inspection as well, so we had to order within the amount they recommended, um.
Ah-ha.
Probably more than we normally would, um, but it is by the yard.
Oh, okay, alright, that, that explains it, I didn't realize Visbit had, had been in there. Um, uh, no problem with it, I just, it just kind of stuck out on the bill list when I saw it, that was all. And, um, alright. Are there any other discuss, questions about the warrants? Not all those in favor, say aye or thumbs up or something? Those opposed? Yes, Amanda, you're joining us?
Yes, I'm here, sorry, I was just saying aye.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure the, that, uh, Shauna knew that you're here, so you can be counted on attendance, so all, now all we're missing is George. Um, so we'll proceed. Um, the warrants are approved, superintendent's report, Chris?
Thanks Clarence, uh, so you all should have a copy of the reports. Uh, the, the bulk of the report focuses on the shift to phase three, which took place on September twenty-sixth, about a week and a half ago. It wasn't as drastic for our SU as it was in other SUs, just because of the fact that, uh, a lot of these uh, measures were already kind of put into place since the beginning of the year, uh, due to the size of our schools, we were able to kind of, had a little more leeway with regards to social distancing, uh, so I, I have put together a bit of a grid that explains what will not change and what will change, and you'll see that, uh, we're still going to be, uh, obviously the health screens, temperature checks, uh, you know, creating that safe perimeter in our schools will still be in place, mitigation, cleaning protocols will still be taking place on a nightly basis, we'll still be looking to do thorough cleanings on regularly. Uh, we, uh, right now, we have the current, the four day in-person model with the Wednesday remotes. We are working with our teacher union, uh, currently to, uh, develop a time, timeline to shift to that five day in-person model. I think one of the things we were very fortunate is our cautious approach has allowed us to get to this point, we want to make sure that as we shift into that five day model that, uh, we do it appropriately, we do it the right way. We did have some schools within the SU who have shifted through a pod to, uh, movements, uh, so we, we've had to kind of just, you know, take, take our time with that, but we will be shifting to the five day in-person, probably, I'd say the earliest would be by the start of the second quarter, which would be of first week of November, but we are working with the teachers union in terms of what that will look like. Remote learning will still take place, uh, during this time, uh, we are also work with the union, uh, kind of moving forward with what, uh, remote learning may look like uh, into the second quarter, into the second half of the year, but there will be a remote learning option, but we'll have more details on that in the November board meeting, uh, for you. Uh, you know, obviously what will change, we, we have a little more flexibility with the social distancing, which is a recommendation, never has been a requirement, but we've been, obviously with, you know, use of facial coverings and social distancing has allowed us to be relatively safe there in schools. The new guidance that, uh, just came out has expanded the three foot to six foot range, not just from K to three to K to six now, so in, uh, both of our schools, the three to six feet, uh, social distancing is the recommendation now, so the, and there will be some updated guidance being issued tomorrow with regards that there are a couple type O's and a couple other issues. So the guidance that came out on the sixth, uh, yesterday, uh, is going to be updated, uh, so there'll be, uh, the FAQ and the memo regarding that will, will come out tomorrow, so. Uh, we also have obviously use of gyms and cafeterias, uh, but that doesn't mean that we can go back to where we once were, we have to still look at, uh, doing, you know, inappropriate social distancing, you know, do it in a safe manner, so that's something which Rick and Liz can talk a little more about what that looks like within their schools. Uh, yeah, so that's, that's about it for the phase three, uh, like you said, most of these, these things, there will be drastic changes for us. Uh, Rick and Liz and the staff have done a nice job of, you know, getting the building ready to go and moving through. Uh, the one thing we just have to keep an eye is when we move to that fifth day of in-person as well as that shift in remote learning, what that may look like. They said, but that, more details will come with that. And we'll go, you know, present to the board in November, uh, those, those items. Any questions on the phase three before I move on to the next sections?
Nothing I can think of, so we're looking no earlier than the first of November, but it might be, might be later to go to phase three depending on how negotiations go.
Well, there, there are discussions with our, our union in terms of how to move, you know, move safely into that fifth day, and we're also closely monitoring as we start to move into the flu season, what's going to happen, and we're just taking a look to see what's going on each of our buildings. But that will be something which they said, we will, you know, you'll have information for that, we also want to make sure we give community members and families enough time to make that shift too, so uh, we don't want to just sit there and say, you know, like on a Wednesday, next Monday we'll be shifting because we want child care and uh, is important and, you know, there's disruptive nature of changing the schedule at the last minute, so there'll be more than enough lead time for families to prepare for that.
What are you, what are, you're considering for the Wednesday that it'll be a half day dismissal or a two o'clock dismissal, or?
There are a couple of different scenarios that we're working, we're looking at right now, and I think that's something where, uh, the two scenarios would be, uh, if we would shift to an in-person, it would be currently a half day in-person. Uh, so instead of a two o'clock dismissal on the day, of a twelve o'clock dismissal on that day. Uh, so currently what we have, but just to be in person, and then our staff would have their, uh, professional development and their training uh, till four o'clock on those same days, or the second model, that just depends on what we do with the remote learning would be the two o'clock day, where all, all students are in person for till two o'clock uh, on Wednesday, so instead of like a two o'clock Tuesday, last year it'd be a two o'clock Wednesday, so these are the scenarios we're, we're currently working through, work with the union, all the admin team and teaching staff.
Last year it was two o'clock on Wednesday, was it?
It was Tuesdays. Right, and so we shifted it to Wednesday, just, you know, at the start of the year because of the, the cleaning and, you know, the, the midweek.
It was Tues, it was Tuesdays last year, I thought it was Wednesday. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. I, I thought it was Wednesday, okay. No big deal, one day or the other.
Right.
Okay. Okay, go ahead for your next part.
So the, the, next couple of things really, just, uh, you know, open houses, we're, you know, Rick and Liz can talk a little more about their open house and back to school night. Obviously, we've had to make some shifts, uh, with this. Um, you know, because we can't have, you know, families and inside the school building, but the, the, you know, Rick and Liz and staff did a nice job of rescheduling things and making it work, uh, or going to make it work, so it's, it looks good, so they'll, I won't take too much of your time with that, Rick and Liz can go in more detail with their plans and what that looked like. Uh, the conferences, uh, parent teacher conferences we discussed today, uh, something which, you know, Rick and Liz who were at it, uh, were not at our meeting, but were often have heard, but we're looking at doing a remote option for our parent teacher conferences, um, uh, which will make, you know, more of a virtual, just give them more flexibility for our staff as well as for families. Um, just, we feel that's, even regardless, even if we're in a good position, good place, it just doesn't make sense for us to uh, open the doors up and just have, you know, variety of families moving in and out of the building, it just gets very problematic, so we're looking at more of a, a virtual or a, uh, kind of like a Google Meet or a Zoom, uh, conference during, in November, so that Rick and Liz, so we'll have more information about it as we get closer to that, uh, that time. Um, the, uh, next thing I have on just election day, uh, there will be some discussion that in two of our schools, uh, Rutland Town School and Proctor High School have a whole general elections within their facilities, and always why I'm going to bring this up is the fact that, you know, you'll see that those two schools will be moved to fully remote on those days just for safety as well as for, you know, health standpoint. But all the other schools within the SCS of Middletown and Wells will be in, you know, in person on those days. Uh, so I just want to kind of clarify, that's the only reason that those two schools will be fully remote is just because of the fact that the, uh, you know, that's a polling place, and so we'll have community members going in and out of the building, uh, but, uh, Wells and Middletown will be a normal school day on those days. Uh, the last thing we're, uh, to talk about is the GRCSU equity, equity and diversity planning team. Yeah, we talked about this in our, uh, policy committee meeting the other day. Uh, this is born out of real H, H three or Act One, uh, which uh, is really going to have us take a look at just, you know, diversity, inclusion and equity within our SU, um, just within each building, and also looking at age appropriate, uh, you know, curriculum, you know, practices and things, all those lines, so uh, there's, there's a lot there, but we are basically asking for community members, uh, you know, in, inputs, participation, board members participation, you know, uh, you know, stakeholders in this as well, because it, it will be an SU, but we'll also be looking to craft things, obviously specific to communities as well as the schools, so. And you'll, you'll be hearing more about this, uh, in the coming months as, as we move forward with that.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? On his report?
Has there been any talk, um, in the SU or Well Springs about, uh, flu vaccines?
Yeah, um, I'll jump in.
For staff?
Yeah, so our, Jackie has, um, scheduled between Middletown and Wells, um, I can speak to the date for Wells is next week, so we've offered staff to come in and, and to get their flu shots. Um, we'll set it up and, and take care of that, I know she's reached out to Middletown as well.
And students?
We have not addressed the student piece yet, um, but would take feedback on that.
Yeah, I, I think if it's possible, it ought to be offered. Um.
So, Meredith, that's something that I think Liz and Rick can talk to Jackie about to see if, uh, if that's a possibility uh, for that, so, you know, get back to you on that.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's fine, I just, you know, um, if, if, you know, if you're, if they're coming in to do it anyways, then, uh.
Who's, who's going to be doing that for, uh, the, uh?
Uh, my understanding, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, is that Jackie reached out to community health and they're coming to provide it, they did it, um, in Wells last year, Chris Bongart's put it together for staff.
Same, same group.
Yeah, so same group as last year.
Is, um, there, uh, a, a cost to this that we're bearing or a, a small fee?
It goes through the, the people's insurance, so they just come and provide it and we fill out the paperwork.
So it's, it's whatever the insurance covers is what we take? And, uh, i- if that's what this, this people that do it are satisfied with that payment?
Mm-hmm. But that's how it happened last year, so.
It's been for a number of years.
Okay.
Okay. Um, alright, so that's, um, yeah, all, all our staff is covered by Visbit's plan, right? Visbit, who's the one that's paying for this?
Should be the health insurance, I would think.
Yeah. So it's, okay. So they're all in the same group plan, so, okay, that makes, that makes sense, uh, that they're, they're covering that. Um, any other questions for Chris? If not, we'll move on to the, um, principal's report list here. Uh, last month, I think Rick went first, so tonight it's Liz's turn.
Sure, so included in the materials is my report as well, um, so I'd be happy to take questions on any of that. Um, I did want to jump to and just talk about what step three looks like in our building. Um, we are, like Chris mentioned, we were prepared to kind of be ready for this already. Um, all we have done at Wells is asked the art teacher and the music teacher to move from being in the classrooms to going into the multipurpose room, so that students had the opportunity um, to have their specials in that space. Um, we are currently working on ways to move all of the furniture that's in the, the multi, now that we see how much space we have to open that back up. Um, we are going to remain with students eating lunch in their classrooms for the foreseeable future, and, um, our hope is that we can kind of settle where we're at and, and make that change if it's appropriate right now. I don't think it's, it's fair to ask children to maintain distance on a bench if we have an opportunity for them to, to know their space that they currently have. Um, so that's in regards to step three. Um, we did our open house last Tuesday and it went really well, um, but if you were on, there was a, the fire alarm went off in the middle of open house. Um, completely unplanned, but yet expected, we were spraying for bees and, um, it got into the center and that was it, so uh, we got a, we got a good portion of open house in and teachers have been fielding questions from families, have been getting a chance to ask them in person, so I just appreciate the staff's flexibility and um, the support of everybody getting through it, so. Um, really happy with everything that's happening and, um, just excited to have the kids back and, and looking forward to the continuing changes that we're going to make in the next step.
Any questions for Liz on her report? Or any questions for the Wells School? Oh, we can't let you off the hook that easy. Rick, go ahead.
So it feels a little bit like Groundhog Day, uh, it, in the sense of really, we've been focusing on the academics, the new, uh, math and DLA program and just uh, health and safety of the kids, and really that has been the focus for the last. health and safety of the kids. And really that has been the focus for the last two months and continues to be. But I, I really want to say things are going well. I'm really pleased with the students who really have adapted well to wear and bask and all the way down to pre-K. And just everybody working together. As far as step three, we're pretty much the same thing as Liz. We're still we have tents outside and the kids are eating outside. We are using the art music room now with, with the small classes to for for specials for art and music. And so no, we are adapting and will continue as far as probably not using the cafeteria as a lunchroom at this point as far as trying to social distancing. I'm glad Liz had a great open house. I was was well planned except full power with the internet, all the staff were on, on the open, open wifi and it closed at six. And then it shut everything down and they weren't allowed to get back on. So I have to say the parents were very understanding. And we are going to try to reschedule something, but it was really good intent and so let's welcome to the, the new reality. Just a couple of things, we do have VINS coming for a program for the different grades, which will be outside. So really excited about that and and both schools are working on the Aware Grant and really bringing the social emotional learning support for staff, students and families. So I'm really pleased with how that's going. So that's, that's it. We're plugging away.
Help me with my ignorance. What's LEA?
Oh, well, that's, that's a, that's a great question. So lang- ELA, English Language Arts. I think I said LEA.
Yeah, it said, it says L E A in your report and I it should be the other way around.
ELA.
English language. That's, that's our kids that have. Is that the second language kids?
ELA.
Is not the primary language or is that just the English?
Just whole reading program.
Reading program, okay.
ESL is the secondary language.
ESL, ESL. Oh, all right. It just didn't click when I saw LEA and I so I wondered about that.
I have a question.
Any other questions for Rick? Yes, go ahead.
It says winner sports program. There, there won't be one. Is, is that the same for, for Wells and is that?
That's up to their, their program, but the PICO program, share winner grant that we've had for the last three years. They're not offering a program.
Bromley Mountain is, is offering something. We have to, you know, come up with like an action plan of what that would look like. They're not really feeling like the bus is the appropriate option. So it goes down to you know, how does Kelly and I want to coordinate and see if this is something viable? If there's another way we could bring, you know, winter sports to the school. So it's not necessarily off the table as far as a discussion, but it is, there's multiple steps this year. To kind of, to make that happen. And we oftentimes would share the bus with Metoee. So we have to consider what that looks like too. So more information is coming. We haven't given up on it yet. It's just at this point.
Yeah, I was just wondering if basketball was included in that as well. As far as, you know, that time of year.
We haven't, we haven't crossed that. I mean, that's still.
I would imagine bas- basketball may not happen. I know at the high school level, they're talking three on three. So on a full court. I don't know if it's going to happen.
Early November.
Maybe the kids don't play games, but they could still have basketball practice. Possibly that could be an option.
It was, so we were trying really hard right now to not mix cohorts. So that means like there would have to be, you know, specific grade levels. So I appreciate the feedback and the point, but I'm not really certain where we're going yet with that. We've been talking to Kelly and waiting for guidance.
Have to wait for the Principals Association to announce the top down on that one. Before they, before they see what the program's going to look like. That could be. Hopefully they get on. I mean, all these changes, if they're going to implement something like that, the sooner the better than for planning stages. You know, a lot of tournaments start over Thanksgiving, you know, and it would be nice to know at least what the framework might be at the top by like now instead of November, but I suppose you can't hurry them any.
I know with Bromley too, I just received an email from them because my husband used to instruct. That they're also trying to get a feel for if there's going to be availability for instructors. And so there's that aspect of it. There might be a lack of people who are willing to do it. So it's all kind of still up in the air.
Up in the air. I would imagine to be the same for the ice skating, just ice skating and, and also, yeah, I was just curious if if that included some of the other sports. And so you're just waiting for the, the recommendations coming later in the year. And, and I guess you mentioned waiting or talking to Kelly. I thought she just scheduled the, she was just the scheduler. I don't see.
She is, she coordinates the GIST program too separately from the athletic director role that she has. She, she gets the emails from Bromley as well. So we just started communicating on, you know.
On-site coordinator. So when she's there, she's kind of watching the kids to make sure they're where. And so like as an instructor, there's perks and the onsite coordinator gets perks too. She gets passes and all that. So it's kind of like a, a job there.
Yeah, it is separate from the athletic director.
Yeah.
That she does for us.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to was the athletic part of it.
Any further questions for Rick or Elizabeth? If not. Find my agenda here again. Doesn't seem possible. Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Meredith to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those signify. All those say aye or thumbs up, something. Those opposed? Motion's carried, I so declare it. All right. Finance discussion of the budget. Louis gave me a call. He wasn't going to be able to make it tonight and he wanted to touch base. We all have, you all received a budget timeline in your packet. And for the local boards for this month, the, the timeline is basically discussion. It's let's see, October. District budget, develop budget, worksheets, meet with building, discuss budget. Timeline, discuss board priorities and budget parameters. So this is your opportunity to make suggestions and put things in that we'd like to see in the budget for the coming year. Up, down. What we want the budget to show. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but the SU said, propose the budget. Level funded and put a separate line item in for contingency on any money differences that might be in for next year.
That is correct.
Is, is what this is at this point, you know, so there's I mean, there's estimations that you make on what's going to happen with wages, what's going to happen with legal fees, what's going to happen with health insurance, you know, all those things that the business office is going to have their best guess that we can we can look at a number, but all us, all those changes will kind of be put together and then we can the board can look at going up and down. It depends on what we have for priorities here that, that we that we want to look at. I don't know how everybody else feels about what should we, we should be looking at? Anyone have any input? One way or the other? On what we ought to be considering for the district?
I did have one thought and I don't know if it's a need at all, but is there consideration for having continuing the combined like fourth and fifth or fifth and sixth grade together or having another teacher come in? I guess, I guess now would be the time to, I guess, bring it up.
I think we have to look at, that was probably part of that decision was, was based on the number of students that would and the, the size of the group and the, and the participants in the group on what, what classes would be would be combined. When it was done, I don't know. That's something that the building principals are going to have to look at configuration wise and on what's, what's going on for the next year. But I would think that's, this is the point where you'd want to consider that one way or the other. Whatever the recommendation was going to be. You'd, you'd need to build that into the budget. You know, this would probably be the same time we, we ought to be talking about. If we're going to have a regular, regular education support staff. Instead of using special ed support staff. You know, to prevent some of that bill back. You know, I mean, that's kind of a six of one, half a dozen of the other, you know, which, which way you do it, but I mean, this is the place where you talk about those kinds of staffing questions that get built into the budget. I don't know, has, have has have you had an opportunity to look at any of that stuff yet, Chris? For what you and the administrative team might be recommending for our schools up, down?
Well, we're, we're obviously, we're always looking at, you know, programming and staffing. I think you, we touched upon the support staff. And that is a consideration in all of our schools, what that may look like, because the bill backs are problematic for, you're the basis. So we are looking at what that model may look like and we're running different scenarios. And that's something where as myself and Louis will meet with Liz and Rick individually, and then I think we also need to meet collectively together too. Just as we look at different things. And I think this is also where just my experience is we, like a priority based budget. We really look at some things that's the board really would like us to take a look at and explore. What other sorts of initiatives? So instead of, if it's a multi-level grades, we can look at the different scenarios, what that would do and from a, you know, a good cost perspective, we look at shifting, you know, ESP and special ed. And what that would do is we could run a lot of numbers with that for you.
Okay, I just, I, I was just curious.
Yeah, a part of it, I'm sorry, part of it is just having discussions with Liz and Rick also in terms of what, you know, what their needs are, where their priorities lie and you know, I was discussing the central office. We sometimes don't have like an anchoring vision, like we're something we're working towards. And so we want to make sure that particularly in a tight budget years, we are, that we really are getting, everything's value added. So whatever we are keeping, that's bringing value to our kids and to our communities. And so you really have to hit, just I would say go through line by line, but you really have to highly scrutinize all expenditures and if there are things that we really need. And we, we can find money for that. Even in a tight budget, you can still find monies for that by just reshifting some, you know, priorities. So it is possible to do. But it's, it's a kind of an arduous task, but it's something which I think we understood going into this year. It would be, it would look that way.
That's you know, we need to, we need to do what we, we need to do to get the, the job done, but we always kind of be be mindful. The last thing we need to do is have to have multiple meetings because we we can't get a budget approved. There's been too many, some districts in the state where I know where their annual meeting got postponed because of the pandemic and they were still arguing with it after the first of June, trying to get something warned to try to get something approved with all added expenses gone in the we're going to have some I mean, Louis is probably going to work on this. We're going to have some added expenses in the outgoing years for this pandemic expenses, you know, there the additional things where the PPEs, the, the other things, we're, we're getting some of that bought, purchased now and some of it's being reimbursed. But I've got to believe at some point in time, the spigot for paying for that's going to get turned off and that's just going to get shifted to the local budget is just a cost of doing, a cost of doing business. So I think maybe if, if anything, we need to make that a I'll call it a light item in the budget that we're well aware that when the costs go up, that's one of the things that's going to be a cost driver. You know, we ought to make sure that's in there. So if people dig into the budget when they're looking at to approve it. They can see that this extra things that we have to do are costing money. But the, it ought to be clear, clearly visible. I would think that would be something positive. Because I gotta believe we're going, we're going to wind up paying for it. It ought to be in the budget anyways, even if it shows a revenue on the other side. That's, that's covering for it. At some point that revenue could very well be drying up. I guess would be my, would be my, my thoughts. And, and the look on the, the staffing issue. Are there any other points or areas that people can think of that?
Yes.
That they'd like looked at.
Yes. I, you know, I was hoping Lewis would be here because I wanted to ask him about this, the, the bill backs and the disallowed spending. Um, you know, last year and this year has been significant. And when you add it up, I mean, and the way he explained it was it had to do with time studies done. For, for at least last year's, um, disallowed spending, these time studies were done in the fall and then they couldn't be done again. And, um, you know, this to me seems like we're just budgeting this extra money in for this, it's like we're just throwing money at this instead of trying to, you know, find a way um, to work around it, I guess. And, you know, I would, I guess I would bring it up at the GRC, next GRC SU meeting as well, but, um, again, it was, you know, $40,000 last year and, and, um, about the same this year. So, uh, you know, that's something that, um, I don't know where he's putting it in the budget, but, um, you know, I guess if, if, you know, if people knew that, you know, we're just budgeting this extra money in, you know, for this extra spending. And then last year's budget, we agreed to have, um, to hire just a person to come in to cover those, um, those duties so that, um, the principals weren't using, um, the special educators or pairs or whatever that results in that extra spending. Um, and of course, I don't know how it's going to look, you know, with, um, with, with the way things are going this year, but I don't know, maybe Chris can, or the principals can offer some insight on that. But that's just one, one area that I've, that I've been concerned about.
So to address the, the build back, at least for Middletown Springs, we have one special ed IA that's for all, all students. And at this time, we don't have students that need support like during recess time. So, um, so that will be unallowed time and, and there's no way around it. Having an extra IA to cover that recess time is not going to do any good. So we can take a little pleasure in the fact that we have low sped needs right now, but we still have a need for sped IA to cover services for students during the day. So, um, I don't know how, and I, for this year, maybe a little bit better, but, uh, so it's not like we're full of staff. It's just the way it's working out with, with their educational plans that.
Yeah.
Not a very good answer, but, uh, I mean, uh.
Well, I, I, I guess I, Eric, I look at this, um, um, a little differently. I, I can be a, um, the supervisor union had to take over special ed costs. All right. So they have, they have to provide someone to cover the special ed needs at a school. Like we'll just pick on Middletown and I'll just draw numbers out of my hat, but, uh, we need a special ed person there 75% of the time, because that's what the IEPs dictate all over to the school. But the other 25%, we don't need that special ed person for, but yet they're there as a full-time person. So we get to use that other 25% for something else, you know, that they wind up being a disallowed expense because we get to use them. Now, if we hired someone to replace that, if we didn't use that special ed person when they're there, then that disallowed person is going to be on the, uh, on the supervisor union, and that ain't going to happen because they, all they're going to do is get this, the special ed costs. We're caught in a catch 22. Do the, do we have to pay more to the SU because they have to pay this person to do nothing? Or do we get to use them and get charged for it as a bill back? We're going to get, we're going to pay the cost of this, this person one way or the other. Uh, you know, I, I don't like the bill back any better than you do, and I'd like to keep it down. But I, unless we had full-time needs at the school, if the school's bigger and they have more special ed needs spread out throughout the whole day, every, every minute of every day requires a special ed instructor, then we wouldn't wind up with the bill back because it would be utilization of it. We just don't have the ability to utilize it for the whole school day is, is the way I look at it. So if, if we're not paying for it one way, we're going to pay for it the other. I, I would hope that the special ed people could figure out a way to utilize these people in, in those off times that are a re, a reimbursable expense. I think part of that is something that, that the special ed director might be able to manage a little differently. Am I wrong in that assumption, Chris?
No, you're, you're correct. And that was a discussion I, I had with Christine Cam today was we were, we're talking about this exactly. So she is looking at alternative solutions to, to address this problem, not just here in, you know, Wells Springs, but now across the SU.
Okay. So, so, uh, that's, I mean, that's the only way I see of helping the problem is, is utilize these people. Have a program that utilizes their full time as a special ed person as much as possible to limit their, to limit our exposure. And then if we're talking about general education, um, needs for a, a, an aide, if, then if we have to hire somebody, then the next thing is can you find anybody to hire in this, in this job market, you know? Uh, that's, that's the other thing, uh.
Well, we put that in the budget, you know, for, for this year's budget. Last year for that reason, so.
Did we, did we not fill that position this year?
Well, with COVID, I would imagine it wasn't being filled, you know, for the fact that, uh, students are eating their lunches in the classroom and maybe there's not a need. You know, that's why I was saying earlier, you know, this year might look different than the last two years, you know, because of the COVID and how things are being run, being run differently. But, you know, I still, I still think it's something to bring up now because if next school year goes back to normal and, you know, at the end of that fiscal year, we're, we've got like another $45,000, you know, um, total bill back for disallowed spending, you know, it's just, um, you know, I, I think it's good that, you know, it's being looked at at the SU, but, you know, again, I think there's, there's still more information. I just don't understand. I guess maybe that's why I was hoping Lewis could explain some more of it, or Chris, maybe you can as far as.
Well, but also if it's built into the budget, it then it's kind of like six of one, half a dozen of the other, you know? We've got to pay for it. We plan to pay for it. Um, it's not getting charged more like Clarence said, if you've only using three quarters of a person, you, you're not going to fill that job as a three-quarter job. So, um, I, I just think being prepared, having it in the budget is important, whether, not necessarily as, as an additional job.
Well, we're getting charged more for using special ed and Paris than we would having, um, you know, just like a regular hourly person, you know?
No, no, well, no, we, when you get right down to it, we aren't, it just does shows up a little differently. Because when we're getting charged from the, from the, the bill back, we're paying their retirement, their social security and all that other stuff. That's, that's added on with, that comes in with the bill back. But if we hire them directly, we're still paying for all of that stuff. It's just coming out of another line item in the budget. So you don't, you don't see it. It's, you don't see the same cost because it's still there, but we'd have to, you'd have to pull it out and add it all together. It's not just the wages because both the people are all paid off the same, same support staff. Pay sale, they're all, they're all paid the same regardless of whether they're special ed or whether they're general ed. They're, they are all, uh, at their attained step. It's, it's all the same rate of pay. Now, it might be a little different because of years of service or something, but it's, it's, it's still, it's, it's the same wage scale that they're paid from. It, 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 I used to think that we were getting hosed on all these deals. And then once Lewis explained that, you know, that was all the benefits and everything that was added into that, that we were paying back, but we were still paying that on the other side. Like, like if we hired aid, we're in there, we're giving them health insurance. Our health insurance cost for that person is on the health insurance line. We don't see it, but when it's an SU employee and we're back paying it, we're paying for their health insurance too in the, in the, in the bill back. You get to, you, you see it built in there where you don't see it built in, um, regularly. So it, it winds up being the, being the same cost when you, when you add it all together. But I, I do think that, I don't like the, the category, the state disallowed expense. You shouldn't have that expense. We aren't going to pay it and it's a bill back. So it looks like we aren't paying attention and aren't managing our budget appropriately when nothing could be farther from, from the truth. I, 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 I see your point, Eric, and we, we, if they're working on trying to, to get this down, Chris is, uh, tackling this and, uh, uh, so we, we might, hopefully we'll have some movement in that area. Um.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
I have a question regarding that. Um, would it be a true statement that, um, this is more of an avoidable cost for Wells than it is for Middletown because of our higher special ed numbers?
Probably. That would.
Well, it's, it's reimbursed more than ours is. So, so that 25%, we're not getting any reimbursement from, for, for the special ed costs. And you're getting the, what is it? 40% reimbursement for the whole job, for the whole, you know, full-time job. We're only getting it for the 75%.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be, it would be, uh, utilization. I have a question. With the model this year of the kids eating lunch in their classrooms. So the special ed aide is, if, if we have a special ed person assigned to the whole school, they're always working with students. So during lunchtime, the, the, the homeroom teacher, so to speak, is, is handling all the special ed cases with, along with their regulars.
Well, it depends on their IEP. If they don't need support, like one-on-one support during lunch, that's not a reimbursable cost to begin with. So, and for Middletown Springs, um, you know, the IA is helping out with duties and we try to set up so make, to make sure that the teachers have their contractual number due for a week. So, but if I had a student that needed a one-on-one, that IA would have to be with that student during that time. That, that's a reimbursable cost there. But there's no, if the IP doesn't call for a support during like recess or, or lunch, I mean, it's just not reimbursable.
Okay. And, and that's, so that it would have to be, in order for that ops to be covered, it would have to be in the IEP that, that that's a, um, a reversible, um, yeah.
I don't think it would work if you have the IA cover the whole class and supposed to be supporting a one-on-one. I, that would not fly at all.
Yeah. So that's not what I meant, but if, if, if you got a classroom and you got the teacher there, if the IA is in there also because of a student needs, then that's reimbursable, but they can't cover the whole class. They can't do recess duty and keep, get reimbursed for their one student that they're watching while they're watching all the others too. I, 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 I know that, that, um, that seems.
Quick example. So in this case, we, we have one lunch, one recess from Middletown Springs. Um, the sped teacher has a half hour a day that, you know, maybe a bigger school, they would be offering, if it was a split lunch, split recess, they'd be offering, uh, services to students during that, that, that switch period. But in this case here, the, the, there is no services provided during that time. So that, that's not allowed time. So that's two and a half hours a week. Just, that's the reality. That's not, would be reimbursable.
Okay. That's, uh, yeah, uh, oh, it's, it's now, we're, we're talking about the budget here, but there's one question I forgot to ask you earlier. We'll probably get to it later on in the agenda, but, uh, have you been able to find a janitor yet?
I, hopefully I have one starting on Wednesday. I feel, I feel pretty, I feel pretty confident that I have one for Wednesday.
Well, that's, that's good. I, I, this is, this is, I, I know you're doing a great job as janitor, a great job as principal, but it's not very fair that, that, to have both, uh, have both jobs.
Well, I have a staff room that's been helping out too. So, so we're, we're going to get help covered from that time. So, you know, it's out of the close of the school and I, I, I don't think that's a, a wide decision at this time.
No, but, but it's still not, uh, well, it's, 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 I, I, I mean, it's, I don't know. Most of the apples are getting picked, so maybe we don't have any more problems. Uh, you know, uh, depending on what color Washington County is, uh, it's, uh, that's crazy.
Can I ask one more or make a comment? I know we're talking about the Wells Springs budget, but, um, at the Grixu meeting last month, they determined, decided that they're going to do their budgeting, finance, budgeting in the regular meeting. Is that correct? And we, I was wondering if Courtney would be, uh, willing to perhaps attend that meeting, um, as a, uh,
There's a finance committee meeting scheduled right before the regular meeting?
I'm sorry, I, I.
I have not heard of that.
What?
I have not heard of a special finance me, meeting.
There is not. They're going to be doing the finance in the regular Grixu meeting.
Well, yeah, that's what we talked about. But then, but then an invitation came out for a, a finance committee meeting. Uh, you know, am I mistaken on that, Chris?
Oh, it, it lengthens the time of our meeting. So I think it goes to like 11 o'clock.
I'm looking right now. I.
It's the same day.
Yes, that is correct. So I can make sure, Courtney, if you're willing, I can make sure you're, you get invites to both, to all that.
Sure.
Okay.
I really appreciate it, Courtney, because I just feel like, uh, I, not that I don't think Eric and Clarence can do a fine job. Don't mind having another pair of finance eyes on there.
Sure. Yep.
I agree.
Very much appreciated. Um,
Thanks, Courtney.
For years, we've relied on, uh, you find folks that, uh, look at those spreadsheets for a living, that, uh, uh, um, things that we miss or things that know how to ask the right question about. Um, so if I, I noticed that, that meeting is started, it's. It's financed like it's early. Uh, five to six. I think the invitation said, all right, we've beat this hard. If there's no more burn on the budget, more and more suggestions, we have some. Our general concerns have been expressed on what we. Need to look at. So Lewis can have some input on. Where he's going, basically following the SU recommendation. And.
Clarence, can I ask, Eric, would you like, I can ask Christine Cam to attend the next Wellspring meeting? You want to ask some questions particularly related to special education bill back?
Yeah.
So I can invite her if you want. She might be able to clarify some things for you as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I, I was also thinking about like emailing. Lewis or her too, to just for some. I don't know, some more information that might be relevant to that, just to get a better understanding, to be honest. I mean, it all makes sense. And I just recall. Last year, we had a little bit different conversation and you know, some of the points and explanations that. Clarence and Meredith you brought up now. Uh, you know, weren't expressed, I guess. Um. So I, I, or I guess explained on how some of this, uh. Special ed works and the bill backs and all that stuff.
I didn't, I didn't understand it completely until Lewis explained it. When we had the bill backs this year, you know, that's when it became more clear that, you know, it was. Oh, wait a minute. The, the numbers look totally like we were getting hosed, but when in fact. We aren't. It's, it's still a cost. It's just, it just appears to be a, a really. Bad situation. Like you look at it, it's a, you know, we gotta put, we gotta stop this. Plug this hole somehow. Well, we can't very well, but. We can do if Chris is working on something with Christine to, um. Adjust this to limit as much as possible, you know, I guess is what I'm, what I'm saying. So, uh. We're drawing attention to it that we're, this is a concern of ours and we want it addressed.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, it goes without saying. So we'll, uh. If there's no further discussion, we'll move on. Personnel resignations. Um, we have a resignation of, uh. The Middletown Springs janitor, Justin Davenport. Um, I'm moved to accept a resignation with regret. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Second by Eric. Uh, any discussion or questions? He just changed careers, Rick, and wanted to. Gave us two weeks notice and was gone. So, uh. Did a good job when he was here. Sorry to lose him, but.
I was gonna say, who are you, who are you, who's doing it in the meantime? But I guess that question was already.
You're looking at the janitor. Very capable individual, by the way, but, uh. You know, so.
No, no help from Wells at all? Not possible?
I think, yeah, we're, we're getting it.
Is there some financial adjustment being made to the people who are doing that work with you, Rick? And Rick? Is there a stipend or something?
There is very graciously that, uh, stipend fully asked for, so. So.
So let's adopt a motion for Justin. All those in favor, thumbs up. Those opposed? Motion carried, I so declare it. All right, uh, the non-union contracts are on here. Uh, we've had those tabled right along, uh, until we. Have a better picture of what's going on with the, uh. Unions, uh, with the. Teachers and the support staff and that's still. They're still, uh. Hanging up there. We have some. Meeting scheduled for later in the month if, if I'm, I think I'm correct that we have a. What's it called? Mediation session scheduled. Uh, so. We'll, um. We'll continue to have that table by consensus. That's, if that's agreeable. Hearing no objection, I so declare it. New hires. See. What do we have for new hires? I didn't print that one off.
Support staff.
Support staff.
I don't see any new hires. I just see support staff extracurricular on the sheet that I have.
Okay, so there's, there's no new hires.
Chris, would my internal sub be on this list for approval?
No.
Okay.
All right, um. Old business. Wells property transfer. We hear anything from? The lawyers yet?
Nope, we have not. I apologize. I.
We, you've dealt, this far, see you've dealt, we've dealt with him for. A few years now and he was, we went with him because he really knew what he was doing and he got back to us in a timely manner. And now he's stopped. So, uh, that's not your fault, Will.
The last communication that was in June, so and in that communication said, we're almost there, you know, we just have one more thing to do. And so. I don't know what that one more thing is, but we're, we're trying to get this completed.
Waiting for the dynamite to go off and under him, maybe. It's probably what it's gonna take, but I don't know. Hopefully we can get that straightened out and before you decide to move on, it's been through this, so it'll be. Five superintendents that have had to deal with this, I think. Uh, not that I rush you to leave us or anything, but, uh. We do need to get that finished. All right.
Uh, Chris, uh, these. Support staff revised contracts and extracurricular, do these need to be?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say that. Thanks, Eric. Yes, we need to approve the extracurricular and the support staff or. Yep.
All right, I'll, I'll move to approve both the support staff and. Revised contracts and extracurricular.
The extracurricular. That's a separate pieces. That's not the. That's not the support staff contracts for the regular ones, right? Okay, so you'll, you'll, you'll move that. Is there a second to it? You have names there, Eric?
Yes, Ashley.
Be ready.
You are Eddie, uh, Deborah Squires, Jenna Lee McDonald. First, support staff revised contracts and then extracurriculars, Brittany Davis, John Carlson. Joy Ray, Cindy Cassidy, Amanda Williams and Sherry Lantman.
They're, um. They're stipends for, uh. Different jobs. Cherry, Sherry and Amanda.
Yeah, there's stipends in there. Yeah, that I would just. These are the same stipends that like we saw at the GRC issue.
Okay.
I think so. That's what I'm asking.
All right.
What are mentor stipends? Just curious.
So a mentor stipend is a. A staff member is mentoring, like I say, a new, newer first year teacher. And so they just get reimbursed just for the, a, a year's worth of service and just working with us and going through paperwork and things, all those lines. So.
Although, because we're required to provide a mentor for all new employees. And so these are the people that are mentoring them and this is what's. What's, uh, agreed to. All right. Any other questions about the motion?
Yeah, uh, Chris, these, uh, building substitutes are these the. Substitutes that, uh, Lewis was talking about for the, uh, CARES money?
Yes, this will come out of CERF funding, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
And real quick, we initially have that until December, but we have. Tabled some money that if we need to go past December, we do have some money available for that. So we're. Through December, uh, December 31st is the actual date. So if we need to extend these building substitutes, we can, these positions.
Okay.
All right. Any questions about the, the motion or the? The list? Revenue, revenue. Expenditures, expenditures, resignations. Resignations. Contracts for approval. It's not all those signify by raising their thumb or. Those opposed, motion carried, so declare it. Um, community health update.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Who seconded the motion?
Who seconded the motion? Eric made it. I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did. Do three things at once. And it's there and voted. Is there any? Community health update is the next thing under new business.
So I could start and Rick and Liz can fill in as, as needed. So, uh, Rick, Liz, myself and, uh, Jackie met with representatives from the community health. Uh, reviewed this and basically we're given the green lights and we are now in the final stages where we have to. Basically just change the wording on a couple of forums. Uh, just from, I know that we are using the same forum, say Slate Valley. So we just changed Slate Valley to Wellsprings. And just put our new school logo on that and then send that over to David Schneider and. Uh, once they have that, then they will, uh, be ready to go. I know that, uh, Jackie Becker, the school nurse, met with. Representatives to take a look at the equipment, um, and just kind of, kind of just. I don't say pick and choose, but just really kind of just familiarize yourself with the equipment should be used in both buildings. So. Uh, our goal is to have this in place, uh, within the next month, uh, at the latest. So. And, and once we have the forms approved, then Rick and Liz can start with that, but we will be disseminating that to the, uh, families and I think probably via newsletter, correct? Information run out to the parents just to say, hey, this is, looks like it's coming. So, uh. Yeah, so seeds are planted.
Okay. Do we have any? Anyone have any questions about that?
No, I, I just, uh, I just have a comment. I, uh. Um, I had my kids at the pediatrician's office, um. Last month and I actually brought it up to, um, his doctor and asked. Um, about that telehealth and, um. And she just, uh, she just kind of said that, uh, it's been working great and that she's actually. You know, joined in and done some of the. Telehealth medicine, um. Uh, virtual thing. So, um, I think this is, this is great. So. Just some. Positive feedback, I guess.
Okay.
Thanks, Meredith, for bringing to our attention.
Use all of that good. Good PR, made it work. Now we have. Meredith asked to have this discussed, uh, this declaration of residency.
Yeah, I realize I didn't send it to Rick and, um, Liz. Do you, I don't know if they need a copy of it too. Maybe it's up to you guys. I'll send.
Um, I did find Meredith. Our own policy, I don't, it might be the same thing generally, but it's one that we, um, adopted last year. Admission of resident students.
Of non-resident students?
Of resident students. F21.
But, but is that for our schools?
Yes.
So this was sent to secondary schools because we're choice. And, um, I think it's something that's done regularly in a lot of SUs. It hasn't, had not been done in Rutland Southwest. Maybe ever, because I never received one before. Um, BRSCU does. I received one. From Long Trail because, uh, but it's the, it is our document from Long Trail because they said they were. Kind of, they didn't have time to do it themselves. So, and it was got very confusing. And, um, I think it needs to be definitely addressed and it should be going out to all our secondary. Choice students. Not, I don't know if it's only going to Long Trail. Um, and I've been told it only needs to really go out once. But I, you know, it, it is a bit, uh, it's not onerous, but it, it, you know, it's not. It's not, uh, I could imagine some families being challenged by filling it out. Let's put it that way.
So I appreciate you sharing this. You have one that we.
Pardon?
We have one that we include in our.
It's more complicated?
Yeah, it has multiple layers.
Yeah, and, and you know, I kind of felt like, um, you know, there were some issues in particular with, you know. While, while for some people, getting some of these documents may be difficult. Why it needs to be witnessed and have two signatures, like it's not clear. Uh, you know, uh, if you're a single parent, are you, you know, it, there was just some really lack of clarity in this. Plus, the second page doesn't even have the name of the student on it. In fact, the name of the student is nowhere on this.
Yeah, ours, um, specifically, we, we do get a lot of questions about ours and we just, you know, help, we help the family walk through it with them and.
Right, but in this day and age, they can't just walk into any of our offices and get some help. Like that's also something I heard from parents. They say, well, I just go down to the school and I fill it out there. Um, and I just want, if this is gonna go out to everybody. Um, and I don't know how many people it's gone out to. It may have only been, uh, Long Trail parent families or. But it needs to go out everywhere. So we are getting reimbursed properly or know who we're paying rather, not reimbursed, know who we're paying. So I, I think this is a, something that the business office is trying to work through. Is that right, Chris? I mean.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes. So I, I can meet with Peggy Thomas who handles this. Uh, I'll share some of these, the, the feedback you gave about, uh, improving that form and. Even just even have like a, an insert or something that provides a little more explanation. Uh, for some of the, the reasoning behind it in terms of like a, a witness or. Uh, a, a double signature in terms of what their rationale is behind that. And it's a different scenario. It's almost like an FAQ. For them might be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, you're divide, if you're providing all these or, you know, a couple of these documents, I'm not sure why you would need a witness. I mean, you've. You're providing your, you know, a lot of pretty. Personal stuff.
I, I'm.
And a witness is not anybody, you know, it, it's one thing if you're saying it needs to be notarized. A witness can be just an adult anywhere. It's really. Useful, I think.
But, but all they're really witnessing is a signature.
Right, but it's, yeah.
I know, if you're from the BRSU and, um. It was much easier than this one. I didn't have to witness. There was two documents I had to provide, which was a tax bill and my driver's license and that was it.
Yeah, the, and the driver issue, you know, a bunch of those things. If you're not driving, you're not gonna have an insurance card, a driver's license, all these things. Um. So, and I know there are some alternatives, but like I said, for some of our families, I could find this being really challenging. Um, I mean, I have a PO box and it's a pain in the ass to do these forms. Not impossible, but it's just more to. Not impossible, but it's just more to it.
Okay, Courtney, you said B R S U?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe I'll reach out to them just for a copy of that form, just to go see.
I might even have the one that they provided me in my email. If I find it, I'll forward it to you.
That'd be great. Thanks, Courtney.
Chris, I'll send you ours, just so you have a reference of what we've been doing.
Sure.
Yeah, I think this is, this is part of the merger, you know, and trying to get these documents up to date and dealt with. I think, um, in the past, South, Rutland Southwest, just Lewis handled, you know, between Lewis and whoever was the superintendent at the time, they, they verified who was living in our district.
Alright, and, and this is just, this, the reason for this form is for that to make sure that you live in the district you say you live.
Yeah, it's twofold. I mean, it's that they live here, but that these schools can get paid by us. I mean, it's, so, we, and we wanna prove that we have to pay them.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because like, if, if some, I mean, this is, um, G R S U, it makes a difference for you, if, if someone declares Ira Middletown Wells or Wells as a, or Rutland Town is a resident, then a secondary school, anyone we could pay tuition to. But if someone is, says they live in West Rutland, Pontley, or Proctor, there's no way that we're gonna be paying secondary tuition on them, so they either aren't gonna make these out, or they would very likely like to claim a resident other than where they might very well be. You know, just for someone would like to maybe live with their grandparents in Middletown, so that they could, we could pay tuition to, uh, Mill River instead of them having to attend Pontley or West Rutland, if that was the town their uh, parents happen to be living in at the moment, you know, that's, uh, um, we have to worry about those things, uh.
And, and I would also, also add that, you know, people that are newly moved to our communities, um, you know, that, this says like, you know, you're, you're gonna have to pay this money if you don't reply within 30 days. Maybe they ought to include like, please get in touch if this is an issue um, for you to provide these documents, because they haven't received a utility bill yet. The, their deed or their lease is still at the lawyers, you know, this just, it's really, uh, yeah, kinda
Well, I recall, when we did the um, that policy for admission of resident students, I believe, um, uh, Deborah Taylor was saying that there was a process of a family moving in district, and that they got like a letter from, you know, the house, from the owner of the house, that they were gonna be renting to confirm that residency. So, and that sufficed.
Yeah, no, I know there are alternatives. I just wanna be a little more welcoming for those alternatives. Like, not like, you know, you are gonna be liable for this money if you don't pay up. Now, I understand you need to put a deadline on it, and that's important, but how about if you're having troubles, contact our office, we'll help you.
Yeah, contact the business officer, discuss this with them, or something, some some path, uh, a system, you know, and getting it done. Uh, okay. Does that, uh, that solves your discussion that right up come before us?
Yep, yep, I just wanted to, yeah, just.
And the action is gonna be looked at, okay?
I'll speak with Peggy about that, and I'll write you back. Thanks, Meredith.
Yep. Alright, now we have, um, uh, policies, board member conflict of interest and board member agenda preparation and distribution. These two policies are up for review. They're, um, uh, it's time that they were reviewed, so this is the stage, they get just warned that we're gonna look at them. If anyone has any comments on things that they think are wrong or need updating, uh, make it now. The policy committee will be looking it over, and it'll come back out for approval once, once everybody's had their suggestions considered, uh, whether it may be, maybe simply, uh, just, uh, renewing the same thing we've got, uh, with no changes to it, but at least it should be looked at and reviewed and updated, so to keep them, uh, keep them current. The, these are the first two on the list that are, um, um, not very controversial, so we can, uh, I looked them over. I didn't, I didn't particularly see anything that looked, uh, out of place that we need to, uh, uh, need to adjust on this, but that doesn't mean that everybody else might not have found something in the conflict of interest policy. Is anyone see anything that, uh, they would like to, uh, see changed on that one? Or they don't like what it says?
No, I, I didn't see anything that to me would stand out. I mean, it's it's the same policy we've had, so.
Yeah, and so it's, it's, it's just kind of, uh, this is the informal part of it, that we give an opportunity, and the other one was, uh, board meeting agenda preparation and distribution. Anyone, uh, anyone find anything there that they want adjusted or changed or suggestion? Says we get the material for the board meeting three days ahead of time. Is that, uh, is that soon enough? Before the meeting to have this stuff? I just noted on the agenda policy. It comes out, the, the agenda gets posted, and then the material comes, so three days adequate time for board members?
I think three days is fine.
Okay.
One, one day sucks.
Well, at least it gives us an opportunity to look at it beforehand, you know, that, that's what it's about. So that you, if you have questions about it, you can, you can raise them. Okay? Then those are the two policies. There's other policies that the policy committee's working on that, uh, um, will take some work with some recommendations that'll come out for the boards that are quite lengthy. We'll, uh, try to get at least a couple every month, and, and maybe more that, that come summer for just review like these, and others will be the new policies that we're looking at that are going over, uh, I, something came up, and I couldn't make the policy meeting yesterday, so I don't know just what happened, but it was, uh, uh, on the table that they were trying, starting to work on was the equity policy along with the um, flagpole policy and that needed, and a driver's ed policy. They were all things that they're looking at, so, um, good things are on their way, let's put it that way. Uh, and some of them won't be as easy to deal with as these two have been. Let's, let's kind of leave it at that for the moment. Uh, some of those others are fairly deep, uh, policy decisions. So, uh, we have an executive session to do, but let's confirm the future meeting date is November 4th. And, uh, Amanda's gonna move that the meeting be adjourned, and Rachel's gonna second it at whatever time we, we get done. And, uh, uh, I'll move us into executive session for a personnel issue, and, uh, Eric's gonna second that motion. So, so, we're, we're going in, and we'll come out by consensus. If that's agreeable. So now Shauna can get that stuff recorded, and, and then we'll, uh, move into executive session.
I just had a quick question, I'm sorry, about the policies.
Go ahead.
I, I know, uh, we talked about at the, a policy committee that they would, um, come to the board, the board would, um, review them, and then they go back to the policy committee, but since these are already warned, couldn't we just adopt them now?
Uh, everybody gets a chance to look at them now. And guess, and, and so when they come back, if any changes get made, they'll all, it'll all come back with all the changes in them.
Okay.
If, if, we might be, I'd be fine with adopting these, but if, uh, 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 Corey Valley, or Rutland Town, or Ira thinks something should be different, uh, uh, maybe Rutland Town wants their packet, wants the packet at least four days ahead of time. Just, just for just for, to be different. You know, well, then we could all agree that maybe it ought to be four days ahead of time. That would be a change, instead of adopting it now and then having to re-adopt it. You know, that's, that's why it goes to them, and then comes back with a recommendation for adoption. And it, and it, and when you, the policy that's gonna be adopted needs to be posted for 10 days. So, if there's any change to it, that's why the agenda's coming a little earlier now, because to meet the 10-day warning requirement on policies. If that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
We all set, Shauna?
I'm sorry, I had to look at you. Turn you on and look at you guys. I get typing. I, I did have, I'm sorry, let me do a quick look. I thought I was gonna need to interrupt you. You're moving into exec, executive session for, did you say personnel?
Yes.
Personnel. Beautiful. Thank you very much, folks. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. And, and, and I was
Welcome back.
I was thinking earlier, I, what are we gonna do? George is a clerk, and Wendy's been filling in, and he's dropped a note, he's not gonna be there. And when your face popped up, I said, oh, problem solved, you know? This is very good. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody did a fine job while you were gone, but you were missed. You were missed. Uh, I'm glad you're back.
Well, thank you very much.
It's not, it's not as easy as you make it look.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I really do appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
We'll see you next month.